I'd like to call a meeting to order and ask the city clerk to call the roll. Mayor Sorel, here. Assistant Mayor Hanson?
Here.
Counselor Grasso?
Here.
Counselor Lown?
Here.
Counselor Heim?
Here.
Counselor Penelakis?
Yes.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Here.
Counselor Marconi?
Here.
Counselor Saint Laurent?
Here.
I'd like to ask everyone to rise for a moment of silent prayer in memory of our true truth and pray they come home safely to us. And then Counselor Whitehouse will lead us in the pledge of allegiance finished by God bless America.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, individual liberty and justice for all. Come on up, let's have a round.
Now, we've got kind of a full agenda here tonight. We've got the kiddos that have just won Division A championship, rah rah. We've also got the poet laureate, the new one that has been chosen, and so I'm going to let him go up first because they're going to be having a reception in Conference Room A, but the councilors can't go. We've got to stay here and do our job. I'd like to read the first one. A pro- oh, I've got so many, I can't keep up with them. A proclamation, whereas Portsmouth is a community known for the vitality of its arts and its culture, and whereas poetry is an art form that provides pleasure and expression for many citizens of Portsmouth, and whereas a poet laureate is a symbol of the important role that the arts play in the lives of our community members, and whereas the position of poet laureate honors an outstanding poet whose work has enriched the Portsmouth community. Now therefore, I Evelyn Sorel, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, do join with the members of the City Council in proclaiming John Peralt, which was a big secret. John will be serving a term of one year, I'm staying right there, renewable for a second year, and I urge all citizens to join in the enjoyment of John's portrait and in celebration of the artistic heritage of our community, given with my hand and seal of the City of Portsmouth on this fourteenth day of April 2003. It's very hard for a woman to keep a secret, but I kept a secret. Just a little guess, John, and your proclamation. Was you surprised? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sorel, and to the entire City Council for all your support, not only for this program but for our announcement tonight. My name is Paula Race. I'm a member of the poet laureate committee, and I just wanted to express our thanks to you and to the selection committee made up of some terrific folks. Peter Hamlin, Director of Chamber of Commerce, Richard Haynes, local artist all of you know, Tom Holbrook from River Run Bookstore, Michael Huxtable from the Portsmouth Public Library, Elizabeth Keneath, a poet, Mary Potter, English teacher at the high school, Deirdre Randall from Peter E. Randall Publishers, Erin Varney, Portsmouth High School student, and Mimi White, local poet. They did a terrific job. We're very happy to them. They could be on the committee. We'd also like to thank the SCICE Inn very much. They gave their space to us for our two selection committee meetings, which was very, very nice of them. I'd like to give John the honorarium for poet laureate and then have our past poet laureate, Maureen Terabassi, present the symbol of the office, the statuette of the poet laureate program.
John, I've had a lot of fun with this. And no one has actually been injured in my family. But I will say to you that in the last two years, my experience, there could not be a more creative and wonderful town than Portsmouth to serve. I personally can't think of a more distinguished group of have-beens than Esther Buffler and Robert Dunn to join, and that wonderful committee couldn't have had a more inspired choice than you. So I pass this over with a great deal of joy and pride in your being poet laureate.
And before I present to you our new poet laureate, I just would like to give a special thank you to the other nominees for the office, Diana Durham, Chris Elliott, F. Stephanie, and we're pleased to have an honorary nominee here with us tonight, Joanne Lipshires. And now I'd like to present the new poet laureate of Portsmouth, John Peralt.
Thank you very much, Mayor Sorel, Council. It's indeed an honor to be here this evening. I am deeply honored to be selected as the poet laureate of this wonderful city. What can this mean to be a poet laureate? We've had but three, Esther, Robert, and Maureen. Let me think now. Laureate from the laurel tree in ancient Greece, a branch tossed in the Aegean, floating into the Mediterranean, out through the Strait of Gibraltar, across the broad Atlantic, around the Isles of Shoals, up the Piscataqua, to puddle dock and ferry it here to City Hall. Proof we're not alone. Proof we are connected to all the distant lands and people surrounded by the seas on this great blue ball of earth. Proof our mighty river, the Piscataqua, takes its waters seriously, knowing as it does that its briny mix contains the very elements that once bubbled in a bay bathing the Levant, knowing it carries the branch of the laurel when it's rippling back. For Apollo, you see, god of the lyre, god of poetry, was sweet on a woman named Daphne, who after chasing her through the forest, just at the moment he caught at her sleeve, she turned into a laurel tree. And from that moment, Apollo took the laurel as his emblem, decreeing that the laurel branch would forever be the prize of honor for poets. Not money, Margu, but a bunch of leaves. Kings and lords of the ancient realms required praise with high-sounding singing of their noble deeds, required verse-makers at their courts and halls, skulls for the Scandinavians, bards for the Welsh, Scots for the Angles and the Saxons. In England, this led to the official versificator. Sounds like a sim. And a good deal of ridicule by his peers for how could one be a poet if at the same time he was being paid to sing the party line? The first formal poet laureate in England was John Dryden, 1668. And since then, numerous poets have joined those ranks, including William Wordsworth and Alfred Tennyson. That's England. In the United States, we've had an official poet laureate since 1986. And prior to that, the position was known as consultant in poetry to the Library of Congress. That position was inaugurated in 1937, the year the legislators surmised, probably erroneously, that poetry couldn't hurt them. Billy Collins now sits in the chair as he strives to make clear that even in the public sphere, poetry does matter. And closer to home, New Hampshire's poet laureate, Marie Harris, is, as we speak, forcefully engaged in the production of the first nationwide public conference of state poets laureates. They will be focusing on the very question before us here this evening. What is the role of a poet in public life? What place does the poet have in the vital cultural, ethical, political conversations going across this great land? So we come to the term now that's linked with the laureate, and that is poet. What is a poem anyway? "Taking life by the throat," said Robert Frost. "Finding yourself in someone else's snapshot," said Charles Simms. "Emotion recollected in tranquility," said William Wordsworth. But perhaps all of them would agree with T.S. Eliot that at the very least, poetry must produce pleasure, while at the same time expanding our consciousness, reawakening our hearts to the pulse of the soul that is in everyday things. "A poem begins in delight and ends in wisdom," said Frost. You see, it's not merely a matter of being able to scan the lines and rhyme the words. My predecessors have poured their hearts into a poetic foundation that every contractor would be proud of. Esther Buffler's CD, High on Poetry, compact, audible, tangible, but the words, the poems, touch us here in the place where the physical merges with the metaphysical, the body with the spirit. Robert Dunn's lyrical lines nesting on the parking garage walls. We see them there suddenly, unexpectedly, as we climb the concrete stairs, slightly out of breath, only to find surprise, the words flying off the wall, circling our heads, dive-bombing our hearts. And Maureen Terabassi's anthology of new poems for an old city, Portsmouth Unabridged. The very title taking us over the stands that link us to the world, reminding us that we live on water, by water, from the gundalo on the cover through the pages, pulling us out to see our neighbors from offshore, giving us a new perspective on the people that make this city home. And so I, with great honor, step now into the shoes of Portsmouth poet laureate, and I hope I can rise to the level and quality and conviction and contributions that my predecessors have made. My poem this evening is a short one, and it's entitled, "Indian Summer Eve." And the only line that may be of some consequences is a line by Robert Lowell. I refer to Robert Lowell, the poet, in this poem. And as I look through my pages, here it is. He wrote a poem on what it means for the exile to return. She turns to him in the pale light, opens the book to the place she left off last night, folding back the cover, and reads to him, "There on the long white porch, with the warm wind from the satisfied fields lifting her hair, with the warm wind fondling the silver leaves still in the Alders, reads to her soldier, 'The exile returned, home from Vietnam,' leaning on the rail of his chair, inhaling the line from Lowell, 'Your life is in your hands.'" Who watches her rise from the wide pine step, with the moist moon in her eyes, to hover over him and hear her say again, 'Your life is in your hands.' Thank you very much.
They will be having their reception right next door in Conference Room A, so if anyone would like to go in, shake his hand, and congratulate him, you're more than welcome to. But the councilors got to stay on with the job here. And congratulations, John. Now we're down to National Community Development Block Grant Week, April 21st through the 27th, 2003, and I'm going to ask the Assistant Mayor, Alec Hanson, to read it for me.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Proclamation, whereas the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, program has operated since 1975 to operate, to provide local governments with resources required to meet the infrastructure, economic, and human service needs of our low and moderate income citizens. And whereas the Community Development Block Grant program has had significant impact on our local economy through job creation and retention, physical redevelopment of our neighborhoods, and improved local tax base. And whereas Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and other local governments have clearly demonstrated the capacity to administer and customize the CDBG program to identify, prioritize, and resolve pressing local problems such as affordable housing, human service needs, job creation and retention, and neighborhood improvements. And now therefore, I Evelyn Sorel, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, do proclaim the week of April 21st through April 27th, 2003, as Community Development Week. And Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and urge all citizens to join us in recognizing the Community Development Block Grant program and the important role it plays in our community, given in my hand and seal in the City of Portsmouth this fourteenth day of April 2003. Evelyn Sorel, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. I'm going to ask Robert Layton, Chairman of the City's CDBG, the Citizens Advisory Committee, to step forward and accept the proclamation, and then hopefully, Robert, you will say a few words. Thank you for all your hard work.
Madam Mayor and members of the Council, my name is Robert Layton, better known as Bob to most people. I live at Eight Tyler Place here in Portsmouth. Before I get into my little prepared statement, I have to comment that I always follow something that, you know, that hits and really hits everybody and is great. Last year, it was the Barbershop Quartet route, and now tonight, I have the poet laureate of Portsmouth, which I think is wonderful. It's great that we have such a program as that. As Chairman of the Citizens, of the City's CDBG Citizens Advisory Committee, I'm pleased to be here tonight to offer a few brief comments on the City's Community Development Block Grant Program. Our committee actively seeks input from Portsmouth residents on what projects they would like to see funded with the City's Community Development Block Grant dollars provided by Housing and Urban Development. We carefully, we listen carefully to this input, take field trips to project sites, and meet frequently to determine how best to set priorities on our local CDBG funds. For over 20 years, Portsmouth's federal CDBG dollars have funded a wide range of local housing, economic development, neighborhood, and accessibility projects. Historically, some of CDBG's more noteworthy projects have included the Market Square improvements in the 1970s, and CDBG was a key funding partner in the redevelopment of Osprey Landing. Today, we are very focused on improvements in the Atlantic Heights neighborhood, handicapped accessibility, and housing. Much more information about the CDB program has been provided to you, and I think that you all received this little booklet that we put together. In that regard, I would like to particularly thank the Community Development staff members, Karen Chitobi and Terry Poohlen, for their excellent work in putting this report together. This pretty well outlines what we've done over the last 20 to 25 years. In closing, I would want to underscore how proud the Citizens Advisory Committee is of Portsmouth's CDBG program. We are very fortunate to have citizens serving on the committee who provide thoughtful input as well as an excellent working relationship with you city councilors and the city manager, and the support of a very competent and capable city staff, and I can't emphasize that any more than that because we've worked wonderfully together. And in that regard, I'd like to say that in discussions with the HUD folks over in Manchester, we find that this program here is probably one of the best in their area, if not the best. I'll say that just on my own. So I would like to thank all of you and also the residents of Portsmouth for your ongoing support. And I would, I have a couple of our members here tonight. One is a real old timer, and the other one is a relatively newcomer. I'll introduce the newcomer first, and that's Danny Rooney, who, I don't know Danny, how long have you been on?
Three, four years.
Three or four years. And the other one is Cicero Lewis, and I suspect many of you have seen Cicero around. He's been around since this thing started, and even before that. He has all kinds of documents to show what has taken place in the past. So in that regard, I would thank you all for this award, and with that, I would say good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Very good. A final proclamation before we get on to John Darrow's school kiddo is the Municipal City Clerk's Week, April 27th through May 3rd of 2003, and I'm going to ask Counselor Grasso to read it.
Thank you, Your Honor. The City Council Chambers, City Hall, Portsmouth, New Hampshire, proclamation. Whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens and local governing bodies and agencies of the government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishment of the office of the municipal clerk, now therefore, I Evelyn Sorel, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, to recognize the week of April 27th- week of April 27th through May 3rd, 2003, as Municipal Clerk's Week and further extend appreciation to our Municipal Clerk, Kelly Barnaby, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Given with my hand and seal of the City of Portsmouth, on this the fourteenth day of April in the year of our law, 2003, Evelyn Sorrell, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth.
And I'd like to mention right here and now, Kelly is sitting next to me. And in my five years as the mayor of this city, I really don't know what I would have done without her. She keeps me going in the right direction all through our meetings, and she's always there for me. Kelly? Now, we're down to the big ones. The Mayor's Award for Don Darrow School Red Basketball Team, Division A Championship. And guess what? I got a Mayor's Award tonight for you, also the Key to the City. So we're going to have John read them, and hopefully they'll be in order. Don't go too fast, John. And I'll have whoever, you know, is the first one to come right up and line right up in front of us so Mum and Dad and everyone else can see you at home. Oh, and the principal is here. Gee, I didn't bring her Key to the City. And the name was, Mrs. Lemay?
Jill Lemay.
Jill Lemay. Very good. Maybe she'll come out and say a few words. Okay, John?
Okay, Your Honor, are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right. The first honoree tonight is Nitin Danas. Come forward.
Don't be bashful. Congratulations. Let me have you stand right down there and put your log in your seat. Right down there. Yeah. Line right up so everybody at home, right there. So everybody can see you.
Next honoree is Kyle Jones.
Congratulations. There you go.
Next is Evan Menjivar. Next is Estiago Rodriguez. Next is Spencer Schwartz Miller. Next is Noah Coran.
Noah used to be my next door neighbor. I watched him grow.
Next we have Tanner Hoffman. Next is Christopher Kellaway. Next we have Michael Barton. Next is Matt Loeb. Next is Jonathan Snyder. And Robert Welch. Next we have the coaches, Steve Barton and Steve Kellaway.
Okay, all right. What about the one that wasn't here? Have to be around. Are you going to say a few words? She would love to hear it.
Madam Mayor and councilors, my name is Steve Barton. I have the privilege of coaching these young men in the fifth grade league at Don Darrow this year, and I'm very proud of their effort. Like you mentioned earlier, they were the champions of the A Division, which was quite an accomplishment. We played teams from the other elementary schools in Portsmouth, as well as elementary schools in Rye and Greenland and St. Pat's. So these boys went undefeated this year, and congratulate them on a great season. And again, I thank you for having us here tonight.
I have one key left, and if the teacher gets up and says a few words, I'll give it to her. Principal, ooh, I'm sorry. Gee, I commited you fast, didn't I?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm Jill Lemay, the principal at Don Darrow School. I'm very proud to be here tonight with our Don Darrow Red basketball team. They're wonderful athletes, great group of boys who represent many other Don Darrow athletes and Portsmouth youth athletes as well. Their success this year is in part due to their own perseverance and dedication and love of the game, as well as the great coaches they've had, Steve Barton and Steve Kellaway. Thank you, couldn't be here tonight. As well as our great phys ed teacher, Tony Ron, who motivates these boys, makes sports so much fun for them. And without his dedication, day after day in the gym at Don Darrow School, they wouldn't have half as much fun as they do on the court. So thank you on behalf of our school. Good evening. Thanks.
We'll take a five-minute break and let the kiddos, I know they all got to be in school tomorrow. He's going to hire his project. Now we're down to the presentation by... Oh. Now we're down to the last presentation by John Burke, Parking and Transportation Director, regarding Route 1 Trolley. And I'm going to pass this to Mr. Boehnke, the city manager, to start taking off on.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm asking John Burke to come tonight to talk about the New Coast Trolley Service on Lafayette Road. Approximately three years ago, we started the endeavor of trying to provide mass transportation throughout the city of Portsmouth. And during that time, we've heard from many groups that said they would like to see mass transportation connects throughout the city. This Route 1 Trolley Service is one of the major links in creating that, where literally somebody will be able to be on Route 1 and make connections through the downtown out to other parts of the city, either the airport, or to mall, or other places. So I'd like to have John talk about it. I know that Steve Wells is here, the Executive Director of Coast. And all the council members do have copies of the new route in your presentation section or your map, if there is a map in there. And John has a map over there that he's facing the audience. John?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. As John says, I am here with Steve Wells, the Executive Director of Coast, and Steve's going to take you through the route itself. But I did want to announce that the new Lafayette Road service is going to begin on Monday, May 19th. We're ready to begin service. With this new Route 1 Trolley, the city's now going to have a well-balanced, defined transit system that really covers the entire city, and most importantly, three of our busiest corridors, being Woodbury Avenue, Islington Street, and now Lafayette Road. We've got very specific goals in mind for this service. In terms of ridership, we expect that the service between the three routes will carry in excess of 100,000 rides annually at the end of the three-year project. In terms of cost, we expect that we'll be able to maintain the city's local match contribution at 20% of the total service cost, even after the 80% federal grant expires in 2006. The way we intend to minimize the taxpayer contribution to these services is through a number of efforts. One, through our advertising revenue, which has far exceeded our own expectations on the existing trolley service. Second is Fairbox revenues. We're also working with, in terms of developer contributions to the service, sponsorships and partnerships, which is exactly what we have with the P's Development Authority today. We're also actively working with the other service providers of transportation in Portsmouth, specifically to try to coordinate transportation services in the city by eliminating service redundancies between these various service providers, consolidating services where it makes sense to do it, gaining cost efficiencies in ridership. Specifically, we're working with Wildcat Transportation, because they're providing services in the city, we want to consolidate. Portsmouth Housing Authority, they provide senior transportation. Again, we're working with them. And the School Department, of course, to the students. Tremendous opportunity to pool resources with this Route 1 service. The service itself on Route 1 should greatly improve mobility and access to the population, specifically for the seniors. It's going to mean that residents of, say, Margerson's apartment are going to be able to make direct connections to the shopping closets, not just on Route 1, but on Islington Street without making transfers, as well as Woodbury Avenue. For the kids in our community, whether they're coming from into the downtown to the library or the Connie Bean Center, or the Larry Field and recreational aspects of downtown, or if they're heading outbound to the high school, or maybe the community campus of Spinnaker Point, they're going to have access. They won't have to rely on rides from their parents necessarily. And then the nearly 10% of Portsmouth households that don't own a car today per the 2000 census, a lot of them are in this Route 1 corridor, and they will have access. Finally, in terms of the Portsmouth commuters, 28% of the existing ridership on the trolley today are people trying to get to work. And this perhaps is the most important ride that we provide through transportation. We heard loudly at a public meeting that we had at the library a couple of weeks ago, specifically from commuters who live on Route 1 and Islington Street, as to how important it is for them to be able to get to their jobs. In this case, it was a person over at the Trade Port, it was a person who was trying to make a connection to C&amp;J for a job in Boston. Finally, I'd just like to announce, before I turn it over to Steve, that in the next 10 days, we're going to be beginning a very intense marketing promotional campaign with regard to this new service. And we're going to be working closely with the Chamber of Commerce and others on getting the word out. We'll be getting that schedule of the events that are coming up to the council, hopefully very shortly. So with that, I would turn it over to Steve.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name's Steve Wells, and I'm the Executive Director of Coast. As John mentioned, this has been a route that's been a long time coming, since I've been at Coast for four, well, over four years now. The Lafayette Road Service is the most requested service that we've received at Coast in the office in terms of needed, much-needed service. So we're very excited and we're very optimistic about the future of this service. The route is a result of a public input process, both through a group of stakeholders that John had put together, including a variety of businesses and other interested parties, including the Chamber and the Foundation for Seacoast Health. And again, we're very excited about the route. Our plan is to run the route six days a week, which is Monday through Saturday. The route will start at approximately 6:10, making one of its first important connections out to the transportation center for people to get out to C&amp;J Trolley, so they can meet the bus and be able to commute to Boston, be there before 8:00. And it'll run till approximately 8:30 at night. We'll be running two vehicles five days a week, and then we'll be running one vehicle on Saturday. And it'll be on a smaller span of service on the Saturdays. The route will start at Market Square and head out Middle Street and work its way down Lafayette Road down to as far as Hillcrest Estates, and then it'll turn around, head back in to town in the same direction, opposite direction, back into town. We're doing something a little unique in that when it gets back to Market Square, the one bus will then become the P's route bus, which will head out Islington Street to 33, and will proceed on through the Trade Port, which allows us to keep the Trade Port or the P's Development Authority in as a partner on this project. It'll proceed through the Trade Port, terminate at the Fox Run Mall, which allows connections with both Wildcat Transit and the other coast route that runs from Rochester to Dover to Portsmouth. It'll then turn around to the mall and then head back in, and it'll do this all day long. It'll, it's called interlining, where at Market Square, the one route will then become the other route, which allows for seamless connection for people, so they don't have to get off at Market Square, wait for the next bus to come along and transfer, and then get out to the Trade Port. If Market Square obviously is their destination, they get off, they get off there, but if not, they can proceed on and connect, like I said, with other services, or get out to the Trade Port or to the air terminal out there. We're also doing something a little unique with this route, in that we have a couple locations that are a little off the beaten path, but they're very important for us to serve, including the air terminal and the community campus. So we're going to be doing on-call service. We're going to be installing telephones that'll have a direct line to Coast, so that we're not going all the way off the route every single time. We'll go there when there's demand for it, and we think it's going to be a very positive thing. People just pick up the phone, kind of like what you see at airports, where there's a phone with a direct line to a hotel or taxi company. It'll be the same thing, it'll go directly to Coast Dispatch, and we'll notify the drivers on the radio, okay, this time go into the community campus, or go to the air terminal. So that's essentially the route, and be happy to answer any questions.
Do I have any questions of the councilors? Bill?
What's the turnaround time? It used to be an hour before, and now that you've added Lafayette, is that going to take a little bit longer?
No, this will be... if they're heading outbound to the high school, or maybe the community campus of Spinnaker Point, they're gonna have access, they won't have to rely on rides from their parents necessarily. And then the nearly 10% of Portsmouth households that don't own a car today per the 2000 census, a lot of them are in this Route One corridor, and they will have access. Finally, in terms of the Portsmouth commuters, 28% of the existing ridership on the trolley today are people trying to get to work. And this perhaps is the most important ride that we provide through transportation. We heard loudly at a public meeting that we had at the library a couple of weeks ago, specifically from commuters who live on Route One and Islington Street, as to how important it is for them to be able to get to their jobs. In this case, it was a person over at the Trade Port, it was a person who was trying to make a connection to C&amp;J for a job in Boston. Finally, I'd just like to announce before I turn it over to Steve, that in the next 10 days, we're gonna be beginning a very intense marketing promotional campaign with regard to this new service, and we're gonna be working closely with the Chamber of Commerce and others on getting the word out. We'll be getting that schedule of the events that are coming up to the council, hopefully very shortly. So with that, I would turn it over to Steve.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Steve Wells, and I'm the Executive Director of Coast. As John mentioned, this has been a route that's been a long time coming. Since I've been at Coast for four, well, over four years now, the Lafayette Road Service is the most requested service that we've received at Coast in the office in terms of much-needed service. So we're very excited and we're very optimistic about the future of this service. The route is a result of a public input process, both through a group of stakeholders that John had put together, including a variety of businesses and other interested parties, including the Chamber and the Foundation for Seacoast Health. And, again, we're very excited about the route. Our plan is to run the route six days a week, which is Monday through Saturday. The route will start at approximately 6:10, making one of its first important connections out to the transportation center for people to get out to C&amp;J Trolley, so they can meet the bus and be able to commute to Boston, be there before 8 o'clock. And it'll run till approximately 8:30 at night. We'll be running two vehicles five days a week, and then we'll be running one vehicle on Saturday. And it'll be on a smaller span of service on the Saturdays. The route will start at Market Square and head out Middle Street, and work its way down Lafayette Road, down to as far as Hillcrest Estates, and then it'll turn around, head back in to town in the same direction, opposite direction, back into town. We're doing something a little unique in that when it gets back to Market Square, the one bus will then become the Peas Route Bus, which will head out Islington Street to 33, and will proceed on through the Trade Port, which allows us to keep the Trade Port, or the Peas Development Authority, in as a partner on this project. It'll proceed through the Trade Port, terminate at the Fox Run Mall, which allows connections with both Wildcat Transit and the other coast route that runs from Rochester to Dover to Portsmouth. It'll then turn around at the mall and then head back in, and it'll do this all day long. It'll, it's called interlining, where at Market Square, the one route will then become the other route, which allows for seamless connections for people, so they don't have to get off at Market Square, wait for the next bus to come along and transfer, and then get out to the Trade Port. If Market Square, obviously, is their destination, they get off there, but if not, they can proceed on and connect, like I said, with other services, or get out to the Trade Port or to the air terminal out there. We're also doing something a little unique with this route, in that we have a couple locations that are a little off the beaten path, but they're very important for us to serve, including the air terminal and the community campus. So we're gonna be doing on-call service. We're gonna be installing telephones that'll have a direct line to Coast, so that we're not going all the way off the route every single time. We'll go there when there's demand for it, and we think it's gonna be a very positive thing. People just pick up the phone, kinda like what you see at airports, where there's a phone with a direct line to a hotel or taxi company. It'll be the same thing, it'll go directly to Coast Dispatch, and we'll notify the drivers on the radio, okay, this time, go into the community campus, or go to the air terminal. So, that's essentially the route, and be happy to answer any questions.
Do I have any questions of the councilors? Bill?
What's the turnaround time? It used to be an hour before, and now that you've added Lafayette, is that gonna take a little bit longer?
No, this will be an hour headway. So if you're standing at any given bus stop along the route, the bus will come by hourly.
Thank you.
Counselor Grasso?
What will be the cost, the charge?
Well, the, this is a CMAC grant, congestion mitigation air quality grant, so the federal government will be paying 80% of all costs of running a route for the first three years. The positive thing about keeping the Peas Development Authority on as a partner is that both the city and PDA will be splitting the 20% match.
The passenger cost?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It'll be a dollar, remain of a dollar. We also offer a $15 monthly pass.
And for the, just to follow up on it, just for the transfers, there won't be a cost of transfers?
That's correct.
That's a good deal.
Harold?
The pickups will only be along Lafayette Road where passengers are visible to be picked up. There won't be any stops and waiting, and then continuing on along Lafayette Road.
We will be installing bus stops along Lafayette Road and out Islington Street. We put together a draft list and gave it to John. He has taken it through the Traffic and Safety Committee and actually gone out and looked at each specific location.
What I meant, Steve, was you don't stop unless you see a passenger.
Yes, that's correct.
So you don't come to a stop.
Right, we don't, we don't stop at every stop unless there's a passenger there, or a passenger wants to get off.
Thank you.
Well, I personally want to thank John and Steve, because I think I'm the one that receives the most calls on Lafayette Road, and we started this, what, three years back? So I really want to thank you, because I know the people are gonna be very, very pleased.
If I might, this, again, is the culmination after four years of, one of the things that came out of, one of the items out of the Vision Report was the connective service for mass transportation, and this has been done in four short years, and I think it's, we're gonna just be building on it, and there's minimal cost to the local taxpayer, which is, which is excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank you both very much. Now we're down to the acceptance of the minutes of the Al-Anh meeting, March 31st, 2003.
So moved, Your Honor, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Now we're down to the public comments session. And we have four speakers tonight. The first one is Donald Green, Great Day Hunting. And Don, we do have your letter on tonight, too. Are you going to?
I'll just be very brief about it.
Okay, very good. Then we probably won't bother to read your letter, we'll just put it on file?
I think that's probably.
Okay, all right. I don't have to tell you the rules, you know when the sign goes up, three minutes.
I'm a bird-watching naturalist, a conservationist, I'm a member of the Seacoast Land Trust, I'm involved in the Great Bog. I favor hunting in natural areas of Portsmouth, including the Great Bog. And the reason why is that deer overpopulation is a serious problem which must be addressed somehow. The deer kill in Portsmouth, Rye, Stratton, Greenland, and Newington, I added it up, is approximately 3.6 times that of the state average. We have, in effect, that's a good, that's a good way of titrating the number of deer in the area. We have almost four times more deer in this area. Our goal in the Great Bog is to maintain its ecology. I think that's gonna be impossible if we do not have a way of controlling the deer population. Overpopulation by deer threatens the diversity of plants, birds, and animals. If uncontrolled, they reduce the diversity of organisms and the suitability of the area for other species, including us. For instance, they eradicate the undergrowth. Have any of you ever been up to Lundholm Farms and walked around there? If you walk around there, what you see is none of the natural undergrowth, what you see is barberry bushes, thorny plants, but nothing else, and even the deer won't eat. Limiting the size of the deer herd should be recognized as an important issue by neighboring landholders, whose gardens, shrubberies, fruit trees, and sylvan areas will certainly be attacked when the natural forage is all consumed. Large shrubs, for instance, cost $150 to $400 apiece. That's what Beth Eames tells me at Rolling Green. They may be irreplaceable. You may have to replace lots of small shrubberies. So we're in a conflict between suburban people who want to maintain their shrubberies and the deer population. Other deer overpopulation issues to consider are the prevalence of deer ticks, Lyme disease, the very real potential for running your car into a deer at night, which can be life-threatening. The Seacoast Land Trust appreciates the concerns of the Great Bog neighbors and visitors with respect to hunting safety. Here, I should say that I'm speaking for myself, even though I am a member of the Seacoast Land Trust. They welcome the public's view and support, and they have posted hunting season information at the trail sign at Heather Lane. And we will work with the public to resolve any issues that enable us to preserve, I know. But I'm not done yet. You've got a lot of time.
If I do that, John, then, you know...
Okay, let me, let me just be quick then. For many years, we've used shotguns there. I don't know of any problems ever arisen with that. But last year, we did discuss with the Fish and Game Department other alternatives. The most, one that they're interested in, and they're really positively interested in, is developing a bow-hunting-only area in the Great Bog. There is one other at Long Island in Winnipeg, which was a real problem with deer. And they resolved that by introducing a bow-hunting program there, and it works well. So...
Thank you, John.
I, I think I've made my point. You have, you have my letter, and I hope that you'll refer to that.
I know, I know. Thank you. Suzanne Fournier, and she wants to speak on the Great Bog.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, councilors, and city officials. My name is Suzanne Fournier, and I live in Milford, New Hampshire. I'm here tonight because I wrote you a letter in which I concluded that the facts, as I understand them, favor a hunting ban in the Great Bog. The letter is in your packet. Possibly the most compelling fact is that approximately 85% of the funding for the Great Bog came from non-hunters. The second point is that hunting stimulates reproduction, and over time, an unhunted population of deer, especially if you have coyotes, would adjust itself to a lower level, the natural low level that deer would exist in New Hampshire in the habitat. I brought with me extra copies of my letter, should anyone in the audience like to have a copy. And I thank you for your consideration of my views.
Thank you, Suzanne, very much. We're still working on it, as you know, city attorney and all of that. The next speaker is Edward Lawrence, and his topic is another Lincoln.
I was gonna recite the Gettysburg Address, however, I know I wouldn't have enough time. So I recommend that everybody get a copy of the Gettysburg Address at our own library. The University of Oklahoma Law Center is a reference to refer to. This speech, one of the greatest of all time, is reflected, of course, I'm a history major of all kinds, world history, United States history, and church history. And so, Lincoln reminds me of the Count Simberg, if not the inventor, the promoter of free verse, not of words or expressions, but of ideas. And Lincoln was, was a master of ideas, and of course, he was a great, fairly successful lawyer, probably producing as many, if not most, of the case law that we have developed over the years. His great station as president, also concerned with the saving of human life, on a world-based basis, world relations basis. He's, he's, he's freed the women slaves in Afghanistan of sex slaves, and he's also feeding those who are starving. He's closing them, he's set up a rough free government, and is teaching them how to live under a free government, and become citizens who will be able to vote. He's gonna, he's gonna do that, and has already started to do that in Iraq. And this man is so dedicated and so brave, he's risked his life so much, so many times, by growing and beading the lions of communism and the government, and the slaving government throughout the world. And we need to be, to recognize his dedication and dedicate ourselves to support him. The democratic leadership is, because they supported formerly in their last convention, pro-abortion, and now it's proved, through the census, that we're only reproducing two children of our own, which hardly replaces the parents. But the aliens will come in when Clinton lets the gates down, and they're reproducing more than we are, and becoming citizens like us, and that they can take over through law and vote if we don't stop abortion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. The last speaker is Peter Bresagiano, and his topic is "Thank You, Counselors."
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members and staff. I just want to say thank you, city councilors, for rejecting the anti-war proclamation, or I should say, the amended proclamation at your last city council meeting. You and each one of us out here, Portsmouth and Hampshire, 48 states, 50 states, have made a contribution to making America a land of the free and a home of the brave. Our young service members in Iraq are making a contribution far above what we are doing. I thank them, and I pray for their safe return. At the last council meeting, it was pointed out that over 160 cities and towns across the country have passed the anti-war proclamation. I contend that there's probably thousands of cities and towns out there that have either rejected it, like Portsmouth did, or didn't even entertain it. Mr. Bowden asked me, well, can you name some of those towns, which I couldn't, because I don't spend my time looking for that kind of stuff. But I'll tell you one thing, I know of one town that has, the city of Portsmouth, New Hampshire. And why? Because we're the leader. The city leads, and the rest of the cities and towns in the United States follow our lead. And so I thank you, city councilors, and I thank the men and women in the armed forces. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. That ends the public comments session. We're down to the approval of grants and donations, and we do have one. It's the acceptance of a grant from the Partnership for Effective Nonprofit to the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee for Cemetery. Would somebody like to make that motion? To accept?
I make a motion to accept.
Second.
Very good. Harold?
Your Honor, would you please mention the amount in the grant?
$4,000.
Thank you.
And she's always, Audrey's always looking for new members, and there are quite a few from outside of the city that would like to come on, and the only way we could do that would be for her to establish a subcommittee. But Evy, if she's not getting them from Portsmouth, she needs somebody. Yes?
I will tell you, Your Honor, that I think if we're gonna handle the city's business, that the people in charge should be residents from the city, and I'm very firm on that. And I don't care how dedicated they may be, they can be dedicated in their own community, but I can't appoint people to committees and subcommittees with the affairs of the city of Portsmouth when they don't live here.
Any other comments on that? All ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Now we're down to presentations and considerations of written communications and petitions. And the first one on is a letter from Don Green regarding addressing the deer overpopulation program, problem in the Great Bog.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Move to place the fatter on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The next one is a letter from Graham Kent, supporting hunting in the Great Bog.
Move the set place on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Letter from Jennifer Slay, requesting permission to close the parking lot on the corner of Market and Hanover Street for a downtown open house and spring cleaning sidewalk sale, day of Saturday, May 17th, or Sunday, May 18th.
Move the city manager with power as a pilot program, with the understanding there'll be no cost to the taxpayers.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor McFoy and Counselor Whitehouse.
Well, Harold was first, Your Honor.
Okay.
I can't support the motion the way it's stated, because I like to know if it's either gonna be May 17th or the 18th. One is a Saturday, the other is a Sunday. But the way the motion has been stated, it's up to the city manager to make the decision. Is that true?
I think he's supposed to check the schedule, as Counselor Whitehouse is so often referred to.
That's right.
And see where there's no conflict.
That's right. I can tell you how many events are going on on the 17th, right now.
That's why I think that they were smart enough, Counselor Whitehouse, knowing that you had raised that question, to put in the 18th.
That's right. I just hope the city manager realizes it.
I think he's listening, Harold.
Thank you.
Evy?
Could I ask, please, about the 15-car parking lot? Whose parking lot is that?
Cities.
John?
It is the cities.
Excuse me?
It's the cities.
It belongs to the city?
Correct.
And we're closing it off?
That's what the request is.
You know, you don't mind if I get a little confused. First, we don't have enough parking, and now we're gonna be shutting off parking, and I don't understand where, where the middle line is here. Not that I have anything in opposition to the, to the request from this individual, but I just feel that it's a little ridiculous to think that you can close off 15 parking places for one particular business. I mean, you'll forgive me, Your Honor, if I, if I just say that I would like very much sometimes to close off Mechanic Street, so that I can have my tables and chairs out in the middle of the street, but I wouldn't want to intrude on the parking for everyone else that has to use the street. And I really feel that the downtown parking, you know, we keep saying there isn't adequate parking, we need to have more parking, and you want to close 15 places off for the day, I think it's silly.
John, I have a question. Will the meters be bagged, and will she be paying for those?
In her letter, she indicates that she'd bag, she'd paper-dagging the meters.
Very good. Madam Mayor? I'm sorry, Your Honor, but that, excuse me, Councilwoman Lachus, I just want to give one thing. Whether or not... Whether or not she pays for the meters is not important. It isn't the loss of revenue that concerns me, it's the loss of parking.
Counselor Pandalakis?
Yeah, I'm in favor of this, because it involves up to thirteen, thirty-five merchants, and I think that it's something that we could try a pilot program on, and fifteen-car spaces don't make that much difference.
Counselor Laun?
Yeah, I'm open to the idea, but the letter itself doesn't indicate whether any of the businesses have been consulted, or want to do this, or whether this is just one person who's proposing that she begin organizing and after she gets the okay. So I'd want to know that before I did anything else. Thank you.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes, you know, I just want the city manager to know that I really do support a Sunday closing, not from nine in the morning, but after church services, say, from noontime until in the evening, six. And, but we've got to consider additional places other than the fifteen meters. There are some places that run between that parking lot and Lad Street that are privately parked cars in back of businesses, so we've got to consider those locations also. But I do support the Sunday closing of this lot for this season.
Counselor Marconi?
I have to agree with Counselor Laun. Others have been invited, but there's no definitive identification as to whether or not there'll be participants, and I really don't want to feel like I'm zeroing in on one business downtown, because that's not my intent. My intent is to be consistent. Once we do it, and somebody else will come in and ask, how can we turn them down? And we are so cramped downtown for parking, that I feel that it's really unreasonable to think you can close off fifteen parking places and not have some problems with it. Thank you, your honor.
Counselor Hines, and then Counselor Grasso?
There are some issues associated with this request, but I think that by referring it to the city manager, he'll exercise his usual good judgment in seeing that it will work well for the retail community in the downtown, and they certainly can enjoy a little more business at this time.
Counselor Grasso?
Yes, your honor. It says that in the letter that up to thirty-five merchants can be represented. I would suggest, I don't know if we need an amendment to the motion, but that at least twenty merchants be part of this before we go ahead and close off this area, because I think that it needs to be, have a good representation of the merchants in order for it to will be a viable undertaking. So I don't know if, I'll leave it up to the discretion of the city manager, but I would think that we need at least a solid representation in order to proceed. In other words, if only ten businesses are represented, I don't think it's a viable thing to do.
Counselor Marconi?
In conclusion, I will tell you, your honor, that according to what I'm reading, it says thirty-five merchants can be represented. That's not even a legal term of commitment. I just feel that, you know, and I will not support it, your honor, even though I don't have any problems with the city manager handling it, I just don't feel it even should be dumped in his lap, if you want my honest opinion.
Is the mayor has a chair and recognizes the mayor?
I really feel, I personally don't have anything against it, but I do feel that we've got to find out how many more businesses are going to be there. What I would like to do is make an amendment to this letter, that she come back with the names of who the other businesses are going to be, and also, we could put it on the agenda for May fifth.
Is that an amendment?
Amendment, yes.
Madam Mayor? Do I hear a second to the mayor's amendment?
Second.
I hear her second. Any discussion on the amendment? Are you ready for the vote on the amendment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now we'll carry the motion as amended. Counselor Hines?
Well, I'd like to just clarify my previous statement. The fact is that even though some of the businesses in the downtown do not join in on this effort, they'll still benefit by the fact that we are building a new attraction for the people to come into the city, to come into the downtown, and whether they trade at this particular location, or any of the businesses on the street, whether it's Bow Street, Penhallow, Market, Market Square, or up Congress, will draw more people in, obviously, to shop or to look. And I think that the benefit will outweigh anything that might be a detriment to this idea. We need more good ideas like this.
Okay, your motion right now is the report back from, and I think it should go just a minute, through the city manager, that this individual worked with the city manager for a report back to the council for the May fifth meeting. Is that correct? Counselor Marconi?
I'd like to have somebody explain to me the difference between positively doing this and positively not closing off the part of Market Street that has come before us and will come back to us again in the near future. I'd like an explanation of where you draw the line here. Is it preferential treatment for one and not for the other, or is it, what is it?
Any other counselors wishing to speak? Counselor St. Lawrence?
Just to clarify now, the city manager will come back to us with his, not decision, but what he, what his findings are.
The request has been tabled until May fifth, at which time Jennifer Slade should report with the city manager on how many vendors or how many merchants are going to participate.
Right, but I would also like some sort of an opinion from the city manager, or have him, you know, look into this as to how he feels about this too. Because he's going, if he's giving with power, or we were going to give him with power, I'd like to hear, like, how he feels about this.
City manager, would you like to express your feelings here this evening to us?
As I said, dump it in his lap.
Well, you know, I think the council is heading in the right direction, even if it has to be pushed off a weekend to later in June or something, I think it's good to have this deliberation. I'll have the opportunity to talk to the business owner. In fact, I'll be contacting the Chamber of Commerce, because I want to work with the Downtown Merchants Association as well, because I think there were a couple of good comments here relative to businesses may have concern. I think the idea of Sunday is an opportunity, and so we'll explore all that, and I'll be able to report back to you on May fifth, names of businesses that would be interested, plus I would touch base with those businesses on Market that may be affected by this closure. And I'll work with the chamber, and I'll expect them to work closely with me. If I don't get that cooperation, then you'll have my answer.
Are you ready for the vote? Any further discussion? Counselor Marconi?
I'd like to have the motion read, please. Are we voting on the amendment or the motion?
The amended motion.
Could I have it read, please? Thank you.
The original motion was move to refer to the city manager with power as a pilot program with the understanding there will be no cost to taxpayers, and the amendment which passed was move to table this request for a report back at the May fifth meeting for the business owner to provide a list of merchants that will be involved in the event.
Parliamentary inquiry.
Yes.
Was the amendment voted on?
It was, and it passed.
And what was the amendment?
That was the amendment.
The whole amendment to the original motion, the amendment is now?
The amendment passed, and now you have to pass the main motion as amendment.
All right, so it is two separate?
No. It's now been amended.
That's the, that was.
So the only thing we're voting on is to report back at May fifth. So you're going to get another shot at this, Counselor Marconi, on May fifth.
No, 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 I understand now. I was a little confused as to whether or not the amendment was made a part of the original motion. If that's the way it is, okay, then I will vote no on it. Could we have a roll call, please?
Any further discussion? Are you ready for the vote? Counselor Grasso?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that this motion does not include closing down any streets.
It's not part of.
Clarify this, it's fifteen parking spaces in a parking lot, right?
Right, on the corner of Market and Hanover. It's right next to Park and Drive, that little, Pocket Park. Are you ready for a roll call? Kelly?
Michelle? Uh, yes. Counselor Grasso?
Yes.
Counselor Laun?
Yes.
Counselor Hines?
Yes.
Counselor Pandalakis?
Yes.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Counselor Marconi?
No.
Counselor St. Laurent?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
H. One passes.
I'm going to turn the chair back over to the mayor.
Now we're down to a letter from Pamela Rio, American Diabetes Association, requesting permission to hold the annual Americans Walk for Diabetes on Saturday, October eleventh, two thousand three.
Madam Mayor? Move the city manager with power.
Second. All in favor? Uh, hold on a minute, Harold's in here again.
Yeah, well, it's very important. Are we approving the route of the walk?
We refer it to the city manager with power.
What I typically will do is sit down with the police chief, and talk to him about it.
No, you know, just be careful, because the route, as we travel through Newcastle, and we come up to Sagamore, across Miller Avenue, and then right on Middle Street, we take a left on Richards. How do you take a left on Richards? If you look at your schedule of roads, you do not take a left on Richards, you take a right. And then it says you take a right on Parrot Avenue, you do not take a right, you take a left on Parrot Avenue, so, you know.
Typically, but my, your honor, I do review these with the, I don't review these until after the city council approves, and then I'll meet with the, we have a system in place where I meet with the police chief and review these, but certainly, thank you for the directions. Thank you.
I'm glad you're always turning to the right, Harold. Are we all ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. A letter from Suzanne Fournier regarding the facts favor of a hunting ban on Great Bog, and she did speak before us on that.
Madam Mayor, move the place on file.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. All right, now we're down to the city manager, and John has two items that require action.
Yes, thank you, your honor. The first item deals with the request to adopt the capital plan for two thousand four to two thousand nine, and as you recall, on Monday, March twenty-fourth, the city council conducted a work session regarding the proposed capital improvement plan. In addition, in accordance with the city charter, the city council conducted a public hearing on the CIP on Monday, March thirty-first, two thousand three. At both of these meetings, a comprehensive presentation of the proposed CIP was made by the city staff. Copies of the plan was made available to the public, as well as put on file with the city clerk's office and the public library. Also, the CIP is online on the city's website. As I've indicated at the public hearing, the city council has required, in accordance with seven point eight of the city charter, to adopt the capital plan before I submit the proposed FY oh four budget to you, and I anticipate getting that to you on April eighteenth, at which time I will also be releasing it to the press. Given the projected date, the council must adopt the CIP tonight, in accordance with the charter, and make any amendments that you wish to. Now remember that you are not approving expenditures tonight, you just approved seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's being proposed within the CIP. You have another opportunity to adjust during the proposed budget sessions that we have for the session. So that's going to be part of the overall FY oh four budget deliberations. In addition, there is no capital, excuse me, there is no bonding schedule for fiscal year oh four. I've reduced the amount of rolling stock in the plan as well. So it will leverage, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars will leverage about two point two million dollars in state and federal money, and that was really the thrust of what we wanted to do this year, is to leverage as much as we could from the state federal grants that are out there.
Madam Mayor?
I've still had his hand up. I was going to ask him, were you going to make the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, your honor. Move to adopt the FY two thousand four, two thousand nine capital improvement plan as presented at the public hearing on March thirty-first, two thousand three.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Laun?
The planning board heard from the study circles, and I would just point out, and also, the council had a work session on the possible closure of downtown street, and we heard a number of ideas about what people want in the city, and the capital improvement plan incorporates a number of those things, including the trolley, the rail study, parking issues, the river walk, lien acquisition, and I think the public should know that many of the, many of the public's good ideas in the vision, plan, and by the study circles are on the way to becoming reality. Thank you.
Harold, and then Jill?
Yes, I'll be supporting the capital improvement plan this time around. Last year, you know, I was the only one voting against it, because it would include bonding, and I'm glad to hear the city manager saying this time, this budgeted year on our capital plan, there will be no bonding. Thank you. No bonding. Ongoing projects only.
Jill?
Yes, your honor, I'd just like to remind the council that this capital improvement budget has been reduced by two hundred and fifty thousand, unfortunately, because of the problems that we're having with the state education funding, and I would rather have seen this at a million, but the city manager has, with his great inspiration, helped us out with trying to reduce the budget, so I would hope that the council would support it.
Any other discussion? Are you all ready for the vote? Did you want a roll call?
Yes, yes, please.
Roll call.
Assistant Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Counselor Grasso?
Yes.
Counselor Laun?
Yes.
Counselor Hines?
Yes.
Counselor Pandalakis?
Yes.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Counselor Marconi?
Yes.
Counselor St. Laurent?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you, your honor. Thank you for that adoption. The next item deals with the public art project for Earth Day, two thousand three. I believe that Tim is here tonight, and I'd ask him to come forward, your honor, if I can indulge, and maybe take a couple minutes, Tim, and talk about what you want to do for Earth Day.
Good evening, mayor and counselors. Forgive me, I don't have a, I put together a presentation. I came here to answer your questions, if you do have any, about the Earth Day project that I'm planning to do. Well, I am a New Hampshire State Council on the Arts, two thousand three Artist Fellow, and part of my charge with the Artist Fellowship is to create public artwork in New Hampshire during this year. And my work all deals with environmental issues, particularly, what I try to do is raise our cultural connection and disconnection from nature, with the idea of bringing attention back to nature and all of those sorts of things, with the intent of hopefully reinstituting a better relationship with nature. Now, the particular project that I'm proposing to do is a very simple public art project, which would be placed on the sidewalks during the weekend preceding Earth Day, which is this coming weekend, and basically, the project is a planter with a transparency frame in it that holds an image of, well, actually, I see you have packets and you're looking at the photos, that is a demonstration of what the mechanics of the frame viewers look like. The particular pieces for this project would be not like the particular image that you have there, but rather images of nature that we have around here in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, trees, flowers, some animals. The intent is simply to commemorate Earth Day, which is a time that we want to, you know, show, rethink our appreciation for the planet, and my hope is by showing these images to just spark some reconsideration of all those things around us under our feet that we have and often take for granted. The idea is that by having the opportunity to view these things will just, you know, change our, or be more aware of our perspective.
Thank you, Tim.
And if you'd like, I do have a photograph of one in process that is probably a little bit more descriptive of what you have in front of you right there. Would you like that?
Sure, if you want. Sure, if you want to, we can pass it down.
Uh, yes?
Could I move the city manager with power?
Uh, do I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Harold?
Yes, just one question. I notice these are about six and a half feet tall, and they're going to be 13 by 11, so the lower con-
Inches.
Inches, yeah. They're six and a half feet tall.
Right.
And the 13 inches by 11 inches in width.
Right.
Now, they're going to be right eye level, the bottom part of that square. Now, you stated in your communication that you, that there'll be, you'll hold the city whole harmlessly, and you'll have liability insurance in case somebody walks into one of these things?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And in fact, I already have that.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Dale?
Your Honor, I noticed that one of these, and I realize that all of these would be on city property, but if you're putting these in front of a business, I mean, I don't know if, if I was running a business, I, whether I would-
Well, I've had Jason work with them, and we're working with the business.
So whoever he's putting the artwork and the store in front of, you have permission from?
Yes.
Not permission, but-
There's only one that actually is adjacent, actually adjacent to a business, and I do have the permission.
Any other discussion before the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Thank you, Your Honor. That's all I have, except I just want to bring your attention to a couple informational items. Portsmouth Listen starts at Phase 2 kickoff tomorrow night at 7:00 p.m. Also, we have the trustee leash on the construction for the 2003 projects, and also those projects can be found on our website, cityportsmouth.com. And we again have a map on the website, and we have numbered all the projects that we have, so you can click on.
Are you going to, excuse me, are you going to put the high school on that, too?
Um, I would have to check. We typically put those that are in progress on the street.
I realize that.
But we can certainly put the, we can put the high school on as well. That should be no problem. So that will be online, and people can look to see what the status of projects are. There, if, also, we'll be looking at issuing vehicle stickers for the recycling center, and I just want to bring that to your attention, that there'll be no charge to residents for the stickers. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Uh, John, could you explain just what the people have to do to get one? Many other towns put it in the tax bill.
Well, what we want to do is, when we go forward, we want to actually, the idea is to get the appropriate vehicle to have the sticker. So we're going to be working through that in the first year. When people come down to the location, they'll show their ID, if that's, you know, that's their car, and we'll give them a sticker, and we'll log that on, and we'll actually have a database for that. So we're going to try to make it as seamless as possible, so when they come down to the, to the recycling center, we'll deal with it. Right now, they show their license and their address.
Dale?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Could I ask the city manager?
Bill, you've got to use your microphone, they can't hear you.
Pretending to this sticker, is this something you will need in the future? I mean, you can still use identification now, but is this going to become a, you won't be able to get in without the sticker?
Right, the idea is that when you go down, if you have the proper ID, and this is the car you want, then we'll put the sticker on. If, let's say you have another car in your household, go down and you'll have to show.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, if I, like, a year from now, I haven't used this facility, and I go in without a sticker, and you need a sticker now, I mean-
No, no, we'll work with you. I mean, if you have an ID, certainly, we'll, we're-
I mean, I won't be turned away.
We're very accommodating with the public. We're not looking, all we're trying to do is make it a little bit more, if you've noticed in the last few Saturdays, there's been a line going in there. So what we're trying to do is speed it up a little bit.
So if I borrow a truck from my brother-in-law in Maine-
Uh-oh.
-and drive in with my water heater from my house, with the, with my ID, I'm okay, right? Or the trailer from my brother-in-law's, I mean, are people going to be bothered? It helps the city, but now we've come up to the yard, and it's not our vehicle.
Well, we're not reinventing wheel, really. I mean, this is done in many communities, but we will work with that issue.
Doesn't-
You wouldn't do that, Alex. Whatever.
But we'll work with the people. I mean, we're very accommodating. If somebody has an ID, we try to be very accommodating with them.
John?
I've heard from a number of constituents who are interested in learning how much savings we are going to accomplish by this recycling effort, and compare them to the effort of the residents to live up to all of the rules concerning recycling, giving, putting in clean cans, clean plastic bottles, cleaning whatever we have to do, and doing a little bit of sorting, packaging, or whatever. And when we do reach that stage where we begin to examine some of the recycling to see if everybody is complying with the new rules, there's some interest out there in deciding whether or not this whole recycling program is going to be worth the savings, if in fact there are any. And those are the questions I get from some people. They're not my own concerns.
If you recall, Counselor Grassau, when we did institute this program, did ask for us to come back in June with a report back, so we will be back in June.
Good, that's what I was looking for.
Thank you.
Abby?
Just a relative conversation, not so much just what Councilman Hines said, but has anyone noticed how well-contained the trash and the recycling has been lately since the new ordinance went in? I have noticed a great improvement. It's neater, more compact, and it's, if there's any such a thing, it's pleasing to see trash, because I'm out very early in the morning, and the disregard some people have for just putting your trash out on the side of the road in just a paper bag. But now it's all contained and very orderly, and I think the improvement is very noticeable, and it's really nice.
Already, uh, well, we're not voting on this one. Very good. Any other questions, John? Are you ready for the mayor, everybody? No.
Yes, I am, Your Honor.
I'm going to pass my gamble to, because I'd like to make the motion for all of the-
The assistant mayor has the chair and recognizes the mayor.
Uh, very good. I would like to make the motion, and I want to basket all of these, to accept the checks that we have received just recently for the Coalition of Communities. The town of Dublin, for $1,000, just came in. The town, it just came in, Abby. The town of Hampton Falls, for $2,500. The town of Brantum, for $1,500. The town of Lincoln, for $2,000. And that's it.
Right here, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Just want you all to know that we must be doing something right with our coalition. The people are coming out. Now, if Congress would do something, we'll be all set.
Just tell their reps to vote the right way.
Okay, now we're down to appointments, and these ought to be voted on. The first one is Counton McNeil for Conservation Commission.
So moved, Your Honor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Conservation Commission, Charles Connear.
So moved, Your Honor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Building code of the PLs and alternate, Dennis Moulton.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Now, we're down to the citywide neighborhood, the steering members and the chairperson. They never had, they just established their bylaws, they've established the times that they're going to keep their feet, and this is what this is all about. Citywide Neighborhood Steering Member, James Melphy.
So moved.
Back up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Citywide Steering Member, Robin McIntosh.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Citywide Neighborhood Chairperson, Paula Glenn.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Could I ask that the council and the info packet receive a copy of the bylaws that you referred to?
Sure. Yes, definitely. Citywide Neighborhood Steering Member, William Saint Laurent.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. St. Laurent, right. Citywide Neighborhood Steering Member, Diane Levine, I think that's her.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Now, we have a new citywide neighborhood steering committee member who just came on, Mark LeRoy.
So moved, John. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. So they will be set up just like all of our boards and commissions, so they can be voted on in two years, or the chairman in three. And they do this through the neighborhood committee only. Okay, now we're down to Recreation Board, Pat McCartney.
So moved. Second, Your Honor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Recreation Board, Carl Deemer.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Cable Commission, Stephen Leon. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Portsmouth Housing Authority, Ruth L. Griffin.
So moved. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Now, I've just got a couple of reports here I want to make to you. We were picked, the Men's Journal, which is a new book that's just come out, picked Portsmouth as one, 5/5th on the list of 50, as one of the best places to live. The only thing is, the gentleman made a very, very bad mistake in his article. He had put down 2,000-
230.
233,000 population. And of course, you know, we only have around 20,000. So I did send him back a letter, and I told him that that was an awful boo-boo, and second that we should have been won. And then the AARP came out, and we were listed, what number was it?
13.
They picked 15, and we were listed as 13, and you all have a copy of that. I'm not even going to read what, what the Men's Journal said, because it was just nothing. It was really a crappy article, personally.
Wow, boy. Oh, but how do you really feel?
But anyway, that's the story. I do want to mention that we will be having only two, two meetings in May, and that's what, John, May 13th?
Well, May 5th.
May 5th?
And 19th.
And 19th.
Well, Your Honor, also, just so people know, just to review the schedule, we do have, we do have regular meetings on May 5th and the 19th, but we also start our budget work sessions. We start on April 28th with the school department, May 1st with the police department, May 8th with the fire department, May 12th with the municipal budget. And all the work sessions will be held in conference room May unless otherwise directed, and they'll be commencing at 6:30 p.m.
Madam Mayor?
Very good. Yes.
I need to be excused from the April 28th work session and May 1st work session. I'll be out of state.
Okay, very good.
Your Honor?
Yes, Counselor Marconi?
Just to go back a second about Portsmouth being the place to live in. It isn't often that I agree with the Portsmouth Herald, but their editorial, there was one that I had mentioned, probably 35 years ago, when I said, "We all know what a wonderful place this is. Let's not tell everybody, because then they'll all come."
I know, that's for sure. Okay, that takes care of the mayor.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'm miscellaneous, if I may. I would like to let everybody know that April 22nd is Earth Day, and this year, we will be having our traditional tree planting for Earth Day on April 24th, which is a Thursday, at 2:15 in Haven Park. We will be planting a Japanese cherry tree, as we did last year. And this is part of the contract with our solid waste provider, who will be on the contract by planting the tree. And in the past, we've had public works come in and do it earlier in the day, so it's already there and planted. And it will be along of the, on Haven Park, along the waterfront, so in-
April 24th?
April 24th at 2:15.
Any miscellaneous and unfinished business? No, Harold, you don't have any.
Thank you for your concern, Your Honor. I have nothing. Thank you for your-
Does anybody want to make one?
More please, again.
Okay, oh, great, good. Did I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
This council itself has a ring, but it's pretty-